Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler. Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Geisler.
All right, thank you. The first thing we're going to do this evening is adopt our agenda.
Motion to move the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Butler, second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And our very first item is a visiting dignitary. Come on up, Mayor Schoquist, head over to the ambo there. Mayor Schoquist from the city of Anoka, and is here to discuss the food drive competition that benefited the ACBC Food Shelf.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, Council, and staff for having me today. It's always fun to be here. So, before we get into the competition that we had, I just want to point out something. You know, we have a lot of friendly back and forth in communities next door to each other, but showing the closeness of our communities. So, two items. First of all, your chief was at our meeting last night, if you weren't aware. He is the proud father of our newest police officer, Officer Joe Steiner, in the city of Anoka. So, it was wonderful to have him there last night, have his family, have our officers there, and welcome him into our sworn ranks, I guess now we could say. So, the other part is, I have a lot of memories when I was driving here today, because if many people don't know, I was a proud employee of the city of Coon Rapids for seven years, back when both, all of us were much younger at that time, too. But it was a wonderful experience. I really enjoyed working here. You have a great staff, great city. So, I just wanted to point those things out, that all the fun stuff aside, we like to have fun a little bit, but we're really close to each other. So, thank you for that. But getting into the competition that we had, so first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Cook and the city for being part of that. We got to raise a lot of food and a lot of funds for the ACBC Food Shelf. And so, I know there are various posts, but if anybody wasn't aware, so for a two-week period there, we challenged each city to have who can donate the most food from each city. And so, even though you're about three and a half times our size, I thought maybe we could pull it off.
We don't have a downtown!
Well, you never know, but I just want to say congratulations to the city of Coon Rapids. You helped contribute 3,204 pounds of food, which was the equivalent of 2,670 meals. As well, there was $575 of donations, plus $500 from the Coon Rapids Police Association. So, that is wonderful. The city of Anoka, we collected 1,649 pounds of food, equal to 1,374 meals. We also collected $450 of donations as well. So, I mean, together we made a huge impact. We literally collected tons of food that helps that food shelf. And I know Mayor and I toured there. We got to learn a lot about their needs, and they, you know, I think she said to us, if they stopped collecting, they would be out of food within a matter of a few weeks. So, it's super important that everybody stepped up. And so, I just wanted to come, and I wanted to say thank you for that, and I wanted to honor my end of the bargain on our fun little wager we had at the beginning. So, I had to go around, and I had to find one of these.
I knew that jacket was zipped all the way up for a reason.
Right, right, right. And it'll get re-zipped as soon as I leave. No offense, no offense.
Go big red!
But, no, thank you very much again for everybody for your contributions and your time and your energy, and hopefully this is something we can maybe do again in another year or so.
Yeah, well, they had mentioned that their slowest time for food collections, I think she said, was like March and July or something.
Correct, yep.
So, maybe we do this again next July or something, when they're really in need of food, and get our communities back up again.
Right. And so, I think that's a great plan, and they're always accepting donations from anybody at any time. So, and I think she said, it was interesting to hear this too, 70% of their donations, or excuse me, 70% of the people that use that are from the cities of Anoka and Coon Rapids, and it's about an even split, 35-35 between the communities. So, very important, very necessary. And you all, everybody that contributed, did a wonderful job, and I'm super proud of what we were able to do.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right, now I'm going to zip my coat back up. Try not to get seen too much going back across the board.
You'll be safe right up to the border.
Right, exactly.
Then if you get stopped, hopefully it'll be by your newest police officer.
There you go. All right, well, thank you very much again. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for having me. All right, yeah, that was a, that was pretty impressive. Eight pallets of food in there, plus 15, over $1,500 between the two communities. All right. Number two, Fire Chief John Piper, you are up. We've got some fire department promotions.
We do. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me time at tonight's meeting to acknowledge the promotions for five of our members to the ranks of Fire Marshal, Battalion Chief, Captain, and Fire Inspector. These five gentlemen have prepared themselves and worked hard to get to this point. As Fire Chief, it has always been my goal to promote people within our organization who have a strong sense of community involvement, and who represent the core values of our organization and mission statement.
Thank you.
Our mission statement states that we are to provide efficient services designed to protect lives and property from the adverse effects of fires, medical emergencies, or exposure to dangerous conditions. We pursue this mission with determination and resolve, with emphasis on dedication, compassion, and constant improvement. All five of these individuals uphold our mission statement with the highest regard. Tonight, these five will take the oath of office and be sworn into their new ranks by Mayor Cook. Their respective badges will also be pinned on by their chosen family members. First, I'd like to introduce the community to our new Fire Marshal Nick House and Battalion Chief Justin McGee. Come up here, please. Okay, with that said, the Fire Marshal keeps our community safe by preventing, investigating, and reducing fire risks. The Fire Marshal works with the Building Department to ensure that the fire codes are being followed in new and renovated buildings. The Fire Marshal also ensures that fire alarm and fire suppression systems are adequately worked, working, tested, and maintained throughout the city. Nick, Nick House grew up here in Coon Rapids. He started with Coon Rapids Fire in 2000 as a paid-on call, and in 2004, he became full-time. He was promoted to Fire Inspector on A-Shift in 2010, and went back to school achieving his Associate's Degree in Fire Science and Bachelor's in Fire Administration. Nick has served on several committees over the 25-year career with us, including an Investigator with the Anoka County Fire Investigation Team, Chair of the Fire Investigation Program for Youth Fire Centers, and an active Board Member of both the Minnesota Chapter of the International Association of Arson Investigators and the Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund, just to name a few of them. So, in his free time, Nick enjoys traveling to Florida, going to the cabin in Alexandria, and hanging out with his second family, the McGee's. Okay, moving on here, let's see. Okay, but what do they do? The next position, Justin's position, is the Battalion Chiefs, they oversee the daily operations of their assigned shift, which includes nine staff members at three stations, and are the incident commanders for critical incidents and high priority calls for service. Justin grew up in Coon Rapids and was a local mechanic while starting as a paid-on call in 2004. Justin was promoted to career in 2012 and Captain in 2019. During this time, Justin has worked overseeing the specialized rescue team and maintenance of our SCBAs. That's the air packs we wear when we go into fires. Justin has also been an advocate for helping train new and current firefighters, helping develop specs on our new apparatus, and is President of the Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund. Justin and his wife Laura live in Coon Rapids with their family, Alex, Penny, and dog Molly. I kept forgetting Molly, dog Molly. Okay. Justin holds his AAS Degree in Fire Science, Bachelor's in Fire Department Administration, and is working on completing other classes needed for his Master's Degree. Congratulations on your promotions, Fire Marshal Nick and Battalion Chief Justin. Please come forward to be pinned and take your oath of office performed by Mayor Jerry Cook. Justin's daughter Penny will be doing the honors for Justin, and his son Alex will be pinning Uncle Nick. Go ahead, Nick.
A little blood going down there. All right, raise your, let's see, right hand, huh?
I, Nicholas House, do solemnly swear.
I, Nicholas House, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
I will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully, honorably.
I will faithfully, honorably.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Fire Marshal.
Discharge the duties of Fire Marshal.
And protect the safety and lives.
And protect the safeties and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Now it's Justin's turn. All right, raise your right hand, sir.
I, Justin McGee, do solemnly swear.
I, Justin McGee, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully, honorably.
I will faithfully, honorably.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Battalion Chief.
Discharge the duties of Battalion Chief.
And protect the safety and lives.
And protect the safety and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Guess I'll get your badges, right?
Okay, next, we will recognize our newly promoted Captains Andy Peicard and Joe Gottwald. Our Captains are our company officers that are responsible for the overall day-to-day operations of their assigned fire station, and assume the Battalion Chief responsibilities in the Battalion Chief's absence. First, Andy. Andy Peicard, devoted husband to Barb and proud father to Alan and Beatrice. He has been on the department since 2011 and has served as a firefighter and inspector. Andy's love for the Coon Rapids community runs deep. Year after year, he has led Operation Warm, ensuring underprivileged kids in our city have coats for the winter. His compassion extends to families battling muscular dystrophy, where his tireless work in our department's MDA fundraising and awareness efforts has raised both critical dollars and lasting hope. Within the department, Andy is a steady advocate, serving on the Physical Fitness Committee to support firefighter wellness, helping as a Board Member of the Community Fund to give back to those in need, and representing his fellow firefighters as an active member of the union. Joe. Joe Gottwald grew up in Ramsey. After graduating from Anoka High School, he attended Anoka-Ramsey Community College, where he earned his Associate of Arts Degree. He went on to complete an AAS Degree in Fire Administration, an AAS Degree in Paramedicine, and is currently finishing his Bachelor's Degree in Fire Administration. Joe and his wife Shay have been together for 13 years and married for six. They have two children, Kalen and Max, Kalen five and Maxwell four. He is actively involved in numerous Coon Rapids community events and serves on the department's EMS Committee. He also works closely with the local paramedic program and its students, supporting their growth and clinical education. Joe's desire to pursue a career in firefighting grew from his commitment to helping others. He continues to thrive in admission today, consistently seeking opportunities to support everyone, anyone, and everyone around him. Welcome to the Supervisory Team, Captains Andy and Joe. Please come forward to be pinned and take your oath of office. Andy's son Alan and Joe's wife Shay will be doing the honors.
All right. I, Andrew Peicard, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrew Peicard, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully, honorably.
I will faithfully, honorably.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Captain.
Discharge the duties of Captain.
And protect the safety and lives.
And protect the safety and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Joseph Gottwald, do solemnly swear.
I, Joseph Gottwald, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully, honorably, and to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully, honorably, and to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Captain.
Discharge the duties of Captain.
And protect the safety and lives.
And protect the safety and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
This'd be a great opportunity to get them to sign almost anything. They really don't slow down.
Jerry, chief. Thank you, Mayor. Finally, Fire Inspector Matt Hool. The Fire Inspector works under the Fire Marshal to ensure that apartments and businesses are safe within the community. Besides enforcing fire codes, they also educate the public about fire prevention and help provide coverage during their 24-hour shift if an incident should arise. Matt. Matt has been a lifelong resident of Coon Rapids and lives with his wife Lexie and daughter Jolene. Matt started his career with the Anoka-Champlin Fire Department and has been with Coon Rapids for the last three years. During the short time with us, Matt has been very involved in the community, specifically with the department's commitment to the MDA, fill-the-boot campaign, and being part of the Anoka County Specialized Rescue Team. Matt has recently completed his Fire Investigator Certification and is eager to learn. Matt looks forward to a long career with the Coon Rapids Fire Department and serving the citizens of Coon Rapids. Welcome to the Prevention Bureau. Inspector Hool, please come forward to be pinned and take your oath of office. Matt's wife Lexie will be doing the honors.
You went just in time for this mustache competition in November. Yeah. All right, raise your right hand, thank you.
I, Matthew Hool, do solemnly swear.
I, Matthew Hool, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
That I will support the policies and procedures.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
Of the Coon Rapids Fire Department.
I will faithfully, honorably, and to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully, honorably, and to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of Fire Inspector.
Discharge the duties of Fire Inspector.
And protect the safety and lives.
And protect the safety and lives.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Of my fellow firefighters and citizens.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
Whose care has been entrusted to me.
What else you got, chief?
I'm going to wrap it up right now.
We have, just to finish up, we have a longstanding history of promoting people in our organization that have a strong desire to serve the community and uphold the core values of our organization and mission statement. I appreciate this opportunity to recognize these five men, as well as their accomplishments and dedication to this organization and community. That concludes our promotional ceremony. Friends and family are invited to meet out in the hall for some photo opportunities, and this is the important part, but you're always welcome to stay for the entire meeting, if you'd like. With that said.
We are!
Thank you for coming and your show of support. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, chief. Congratulations. All right, we'll give them a moment to move out.
Which is not exciting enough.
Oh, hey, Lisa.
My daughter used to have a metal on me a dress like that, Miranda. We had her convinced that if she tried washing it, it would rust. They might just be your friends.
All right, now onto the less exciting things of the evening. We're looking to approve the minutes from the November 18th meeting.
Will you approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. One abstention, Councilmember Armstrong. We have one item on our consent agenda this evening, and that is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. We're looking to request the, I'm sorry, we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from November 13th, 2025, through November 24th, 2025, and that is the extent of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Any discussion on all that? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to item five, and I think we're going to get a presentation. Mr. Stemmittle, oh, and Ms. Hanson are both over there. All right, we're going to be looking at, we're going to be holding a Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, but that will be after we get a little presentation of a brief look at our budget.
Correct. Mayor and Council, Matt Stemmittle, City Manager, I'm here to present to you, along with Ashley Hanson, the proposed 2026 budget. So, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to provide information about the proposed budget. This is required by state statute. It's known as Truth and Taxation. We'll get into a little bit more of what that is as we go throughout the presentation. But essentially, the way it works is, much like you just described, we'll have a presentation, we'll pause, we'll do a public hearing. That way, anybody from the public who'd like to provide feedback on the budget may do so in front of the City Council. After the hearings close, staff will ask that council consider the levy and proposed budget as it's been outlined in your packet. So, with that, I'll just cover a little bit of timeline. From a public standpoint, the budget process begins in August of each year, and that's when council is provided with the preliminary budget, and it's really council's first opportunity to see what's being proposed by staff from a global perspective. There are other conversations along the way, going back into April and May of each year, where staff start to work on their budget. We do reach out to the City Council just to understand if there are any things council would like to see in the budget process, questions they might have before we get too deep into it. So, it's much earlier from a staff perspective, but from a public perspective, in August each year, we have that work session. That's really the opportunity to get into the details of the budget and understand what's going on with the proposed levies. In September of each year, we need to set a preliminary levy, and we certify that to Anoka County. And at that point, the city can lower the levy, but you cannot raise it. And the purpose of setting a preliminary levy is to be transparent, to let the property owners and taxpayers know, this is what's coming. We certify the information to Anoka County so that they can put it into their parcel-specific Truth and Taxation notices, which come to property owners in November. Excuse me, so if you own property in the county, you should have received a letter in the mail a couple weeks ago that showed the various taxing jurisdictions, the estimates for what your property taxes would be in 2026, and how each jurisdiction increases or was proposing to increase their levy. It also has information in there about if you'd like to provide feedback to those local jurisdictions, where you might go. And of course, tonight was listed in our, as our Truth and Taxation hearing. After tonight, we'll need to certify the levy to the state and to the county by the end of the month. Once they have the information, the property taxes move forward, and we start the process all over again next year. I always like to just touch on some of the core budget principles that staff uses as we're developing the budget for the City Council, because I think it kind of helps, you know, just portray the core ways that we're thinking about the budget, and we know that the impact it's having. So, first of all, of course, we want to address core services within the communities. Local governments exist for a specific reason. We are here for core services. We are the level of government that affects people in their day-to-day lives, and so we don't forget that. It's the fire, the police, the water, the sewer, the streets, you name it, we're involved in those things. And so, we budget through that lens. We know that that is the core reason why we exist, and the services we must carry out. We respond to budget needs responsibly. There are always changes and challenges every year. Sometimes they're the same, sometimes they're unique. And so, we try not to get carried away with overreacting to certain things. We take a tried-but-true approach of trying to smooth out peaks and valleys from year to year, and not overreacting to things, and then having a really low levy one year and a really high levy the following year. You know, what is that slow-but-sure way to get to those goals that we have, and so we keep that in mind. And then, of course, along with that comes investing in capital investments and long-term strategic staffing through that exact lens. You know, we do 10-year capital budgets and things of that nature, so that we can anticipate. what are those big costs coming down the road three, five, eight years from now, so we can start to stair-step our way to that and not, again, have these big peaks and valleys that we're dealing with from year to year. 2026, as I mentioned, every budget year has some unique challenges, and every year there are some that never change. So, on that front, things that impacted the 2026 budget. We continue to experience some inflationary increases. The way we budget and how things impact local government, oftentimes, there's a lag that we're catching up to. So some of the things that were happening a year or two ago relative to inflationary increases are now kind of catching up to us from a budget perspective. From a labor agreement and general wage increase perspective, it's been a tougher labor market for us these last few years, especially depending on the particular employee group we're talking about. And so those are things we've really had to stay up on, make sure we're looking at. Yes, the inflationary is part of it, but the market changes have been more difficult. You know, we're seeing, especially in places like police officers, for example, it's highly competitive. Cities have been very aggressive with how they're trying to recruit police officers, and we've had to kind of keep up with those trends in order to be a choice employer. Moderate increase to health insurance premium, 5% is the employer change. That's how much our premium increased from 25 to 26, which actually, 5% seems like a pretty moderate amount in health insurance these days. So we're okay with that for 2026. And then each year, we know there's going to be vacancy savings through retirements and transitions, and so we do, we don't budget at 100%. We sort of assume there's going to be a little bit of vacancy there and then kind of hold that back as savings. We are experiencing some slower economic development growth. A lot of this has to do with market conditions, and I just talked about higher construction costs, higher borrowing rates, you name it. All you have to do is look at our planning commission meetings for the last year or two, and you notice that there aren't as many big development proposals being made, and ultimately, that has a flow down into our budget. However, I will say, people are investing in their own properties and businesses likewise, in that they're doing the smaller projects, the updates, the decks, and things like that. We're just not seeing wholesale new developments that we were two or three years ago. And again, that's mostly due to increased supply and construction costs. Oops, I went the wrong way. A few budget highlights before I pass things over to Ashley Hansen, our Finance Director. In the world of fire, each year, we do ensure, especially in our public safety services, that we are investing in staffing and training in particular. Training is, has really been an emphasis these last few years, and so there's certainly an adequate budget for that. The big news in the fire world for 2026 is some of the capital investments that we're looking at, first being a new ladder truck at the price of $2.2 million, which is kind of a staggering sum when you think about it, but that is the going rate for a truck of that type. The reason it's important to move forward on this, it is part of our capital plan, it did come due for replacement in 2026, but even if we put in the order tonight, which we're asking council to do later in the agenda, we won't get that truck for two years or more, as it just takes that long to have it built and delivered. So, all the more reason to move forward on it if we're able. And then in addition to that, a new fire rescue truck, which is on a 10-year replacement schedule, and we have two of them. There's one that's in the 26 budget, the next one would be in the 2027 budget. On the police side, again, investments in, investments in training and employee programs were certainly some themes in the 2026 budget. Regular replacement of core capital equipment vehicles, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. And then, third, we are, we did hold in the Public Safety Capital Fund some dollars to anticipate additional planning related to a future expansion of the Police Department facility. We're sort of in between right now on how exactly to move forward with that, as council knows, we're talking about several options as it relates to facility improvements and how to finance those, and some of those answers we won't have until we get into legislative session here this spring. But we do have a placeholder for further design on that plan. Continuing some highlights in the world of housing, we have an estimated $900,000 in local housing aid. These are state dollars that are now flowing into cities for housing programs that really supplement our existing programs, allow us to leverage those at a much higher level than we had prior to the state money. And then, excuse me, $2 million appropriated for low-interest deferred home loans. As I mentioned, homeowners are still investing in their homes, and we're able to offer some interest rates that are more competitive than they might be able to get in the private market. And so our low-interest loan programs have been very valuable these last couple of years, and we've seen a high utilization of those programs. And if we came to the council earlier this fall for a budget amendment, so we could continue those programs through the balance of 2025, and we're expecting similar response in 2026. And so we are estimating about $2 million to be appropriated for that. We continue to invest in city facilities. Fire Station 1 and 2, we're planning some LED lighting upgrades. I mentioned the police station expansion, design services, and then various facility maintenance projects to the tune of about $300,000. In the world of parks and trails and streets, street reconstruction, we're planning four miles of street reconstruction in 2026 to the tune of about $5.2 million. That's the kind of the full street reconstruction. We do attempt to do a lot of maintenance of our streets, so we can prolong the streets needing to be reconstructed, and so we have $1.3 million programmed in steel coating and overlays in 2026 to lengthen the life of some of our streets. The big change from August to December here in our budget is the trunk highway 610 East River Road full access interchange construction. We got good news this last legislative session at the state level, that we filled that final gap in the financing for that project. And so we anticipate that that'll begin in 2026, and wanted to make sure that that project was reflected from a budget standpoint, as we will be the project administrator on that, and so we needed to add in a very significant amount of $33.5 million into the budget. The good news is, that's really coming from federal and state sources and not local sources. So, it's not, City of Coon Rapids property tax dollars going to that project per se, it's more other sources. Northdale Boulevard and Raven Street, we are expecting the county to do a single project there, and the $300,000 you see is what we consider our local match for that project. And then miscellaneous park and trail improvements through our Park Improvement Fund, we're expecting about $770,000 worth of investment there. And then, of course, we're still working through Emerald Ash Borer, as you might imagine. So we've upped the levy in 2026 to 400,000. This is a part of that plan to accelerate the removal of ash trees in the community. We think we'll be in really good shape with removal by the mid to end of 2026, and then the focus will turn more towards other activities like replanting and addressing some of the other tree needs. We're seeing a lot of stresses with oak trees and other things in the community, so if it's not one thing, apparently, it's going to be the other. But this levy will be pretty flat, we suspect, going forward for several years, as we finalize some of those Emerald Ash Borer-related issues and then start to pay back the facilities, not the, the revolving construction fund for some of the loans we took out to accelerate that plan the last year and a half. Again, Capital Equipment Fund, so we look at a 10-year replacement, or a 10-year schedule, not everything's on a 10-year replacement cycle. Some of those capital requests have already been covered, again, the fire aerial, the rescue truck. We are expecting one dump truck to be replaced in 2026. That's a pretty typical ask. We try to do one a year, just to spread it out. Police vehicles, $420,000 for several vehicles. That's a pretty standard number that we've gone with, that covers squads, unmarked police vehicles, and any of those other unique needs. And while that is common, what isn't so common is the need to replace a Zamboni, but we do have an ice arena in Coon Rapids, and we are the state of hockey after all. The Zamboni that we're replacing is original to the building, and it's just really at the end of its useful life. We've rebatteried it several times, and it's just to that point where it needs to be replaced, so that is a part of the budget as well.
We weren't picked by Pearl Jam.
No, I saw that, yeah.
Pearl Jamboni.
Yeah. The Jamboni, that was great marketing, I thought. All right, and with that, I will pass the baton to Ashley Hansen.
See which one's working here. Thank you, Mr. Stemmittle. I'll move on with more of the numbers. So, we're starting off with just talking a little bit about our levy-supported debt requirements for 2026. So this is for past projects, mostly street reconstruction from some facilities that we issued bonds for and that we're required to pay back. The amount for 2026 is $5,664,604. This is actually about $100,000 decrease from last year, as we, we did add a levy for 2025 recon that came on, but then we have sufficient fund balance in 2017 issue that will mature in a few years that we feel like we didn't need to levy for in 2026, so we canceled that off, resulting in a decrease. Most of that change, or all that change, is in the street reconstruction-related debt, and the rest of the debt service levies are comparable to the previous year. All right. So I'm going to highlight the utility funds, although these are not levy-supported funds, they make up a big chunk of our budget. So, let's see here. Good portion of our city budget, so they're meant to be self-supported by user charges. The 2026 budget assumes revenue increases for all three utilities, 8% water, 5% sewer, and 5% stormwater. 26 rates were approved here this November and will go in effect beginning with the May 2026 billing, so that will be the first billing that will have January usage. The rate increases were recommended as part of rate studies that we did the last three years, looking at long-range cap improvement needs and making sure that the funds remain self-sufficient and that we don't have to tap into the levy to support those. For the average residential user, they'll see a annual increase of $46.18 across the board there, so that equates to about $11.55 per quarter. For some of the capital investments, so for the water fund, as part of that street reconstruction plan for next year, that, those areas that are planned have a lot of water and stormwater replacement needs, so we've got about $5.1 million in water main replacements related to street recon, and then $785,000 in just various water well pump and treatment plan rehabilitation, rehabilitation projects. And the sewer fund, we did see an increase from Met Council, who handles our disposal of sanitary waste, so our charges increased 2.69% over last year, it's about $120,000. Capital investments, so along with the street reconstruction comes $400,000 in sewer line replacement. Met Council's also planning to do its own sewer lining next year, that the city will have about $300,000 share in, and then some equipment replacement. The stormwater fund, as part of that street recon, we've got about $1.7 million in stormwater infrastructure replacement. We're continuing to work on projects related to limits that were put in place at the federal level for those, I think it's total max daily limit standards. As mentioned earlier, just wanted to highlight, so since this discussion that we had in August, we did, the proposed budget night includes changes, most notably the Highway 610 and East River Road full access interchange, both in the revenue and expenditures, is $35 million, $33.5 million, and these are, these are one-time costs. And then additionally, there were some smaller adjustments based on actions that the council had taken after August. Total budgeted revenue and other sources for '26 is $141,290,516. Quite a large increase from the 2025. Again, a lot of that is related to one-time intergovernmental revenue and then related to the 610 project. I wanted to highlight just a couple of things. So special revenue funds are up, but, and that includes about $500,000 increase in the state aid for the housing programs, and then $100,000 increase in the levy for the Emerald Ash Borer plan. The capital improvement, capital project funds includes that 610 East River Road project, so that's why there's such a large increase there. Utility fund revenues include proposed revenue increases and rate adjustments, and then the internal service funds, we actually see an increase in the state aid for healthcare costs related to disabled police and fire officers. Budgeted, total budgeted expenditures and other uses are proposed at $137,283, $33.5 million of that is related to the 610 project. Other notable changes would be the general fund has a $2.1 million increase. $2.3 million increase is actually related to personal service costs, and then we actually saw a reduction in capital, one-time capital expenditures. And just to note, the personal services make up about 79% of our total cost in the general fund, and that's, you know, our main operating fund at the city. Let's see here. Capital projects, so the increase there is less than the 610 project, largely because '25 included about $6 to $7 million in Pedbridge project, the cost that's no longer there. Let's see, I think that's probably worth noting. All right. So after allocating grants, program fees, and other non-property tax revenue to appropriate services, the amount left requiring tax support is $41,295,381. About 79% of this amount goes into the general fund, which is our main operating fund of the city, 14% towards our debt service funds to repay back on those bonds that were issued, and then 7% goes towards capital projects to help with facilities, park improvements, those kinds of things, and make sure that our infrastructure is maintained. We have a slight increase in the tax rate. It's 42.05099. The county added another digit to make it a little more precise, up from 39.533 last year, largely due to just our overall tax base. We saw actually a slight reduction, so without any kind of growth in the tax base, then it makes, and if a city increases a levy, it just makes that tax rate go up higher. Okay. All right. So just take a look here at historical tax levy increases. So the proposed general fund levy increase for 2025 is 8.61%. The proposed total levy increase is 7.62%. And if you look over the last 10 years, it equates to about a 5% average for both the general fund and the total levy. All right. If you take a look at our tax rate, so tax rate is kind of something that's a little foreign to most people, I think, but it's what actually determines the amount of taxes that a property pays. So property taxes do not have a set rate like income or sales taxes. So what happens is taxing jurisdictions like the city determine the dollar amount to raise for property taxes, and this is what we call levy. And then the levy is divided by the total value of the property in the taxing jurisdiction, which is our tax base. So we talk about that as net tax capacity. The tax rate is then multiplied by each, by the value of each individual parcel, determined that parcel's share on the property taxes. And so for 2026, our net tax capacity decreased by 0.03%, which means the increase that the city is considering raises that tax, that tax rate impacting the properties in the city. If you look at the city comparison amongst other jurisdictions in the county, so our proposed tax rate, we put us 11th out of 20. And if you notice that a lot of the lower tax rate jurisdictions are more rural communities that don't really have as much services as the Coon Rapids provides, or they're communities that have a lot of room for growth still, they have a lot of new value being added with development, and so that kind of helps keep that tax rate down. But overall, we're doing very well. Here is a tax calculation of the tax impact on a medium, single-family home. So the median value home for the city Coon Rapids increased 1.5%. With that increase, and that comes a reduction of the home set exclusion, and so the taxable market value actually increased by 1.8%. And then, so what happens is the legislature assigns class rates, so that gets applied to the market value and determines the tax capacity of the property, and then the tax rate gets multiplied by that. So a single, a median, single-family home would see an increase of $104 for the year based on the proposed levy, and that equates to 100, so the proposed 2026 levy would be $1042 a month, or an $8.07 per month increase over the previous year. If you take the levy amount, or sorry, the median value home for Coon Rapids, and then apply that with the tax rates of other Anoka County jurisdictions, the chart kind of shows what our home, median value home would pay in our neighboring communities. So again, Coon Rapids is 11th among 20, and so you can kind of see where that spread is. And then really, what is the And then really, what does the resident get from what they pay? Well, here's for about, probably the cost of a cable internet bill per month, you know, the residents get 24/7 police and fire coverage, they're getting parks and trails, recreational opportunities, streets are getting plowed, a lot of services that I think a lot of residents just don't take for granted or don't realize that really the value that they're getting. Property tax distribution, so for the taxes proposed, the median home value would pay about 30% of their overall taxes would go, would go towards the city, which as stated, the local government has the most impact on the day-to-day life of residents, so, you know, you're really seeing the efforts of what you're paying. All right, so next step, so we have a complete total budget, it's about 300 pages available on our website, if you want to really delve into the detail. Following this presentation, council will be asked to conduct the public hearing and allow for public comment, and then consider regulations for adopting the '26 budget and tax levy.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions of either Ms. Hanson or Mr. Stemland? All right, if there are no questions, then we will conduct the truth and taxation hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel for the truth and taxation hearing? I'm going to open that public hearing now. Is anybody here to address counsel for the truth and taxation hearing? All right, please step up to the mic and give us your name and address.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Palumbo, I've been in Coon Rapids for about seven years, 46683 Lane, Northwest. Just two comments, the start of the presentation was about transparency, and I'd like to reiterate that me as a citizen, that's one of the most important things, and so it's a compliment to you for being as transparent as you are. The other one is a forward-looking one with the continuous increases in taxes, every year it's an average of 5%, and eventually that's going to be not sustainable, and I understand everything costs a lot of money, especially in these days, but you are going to get to a point where you're going to have to make very hard decisions, where you have to back off on services, do more with less, or people are just not going to be able to survive. So again, it's years down the line, but it's something to keep in mind. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, is anybody else here to address counsel for, yes, sir, go ahead, give us your name and address and your comments, sir.
Good evening. I appreciate the work that city council does here. It's a difficult job. My name's Dave Olson, I'm a CPA and I'm retired at this point in time, I've lived in Coon Rapids for 45 years. I agree with the gentleman, what the gentleman just said, I went and did a little analysis of just my property, because that's the only thing I have tax statements for. Over the last 11 years, on average, my taxes have increased, just for city taxes, 6.7% or 233% of inflation for an 11 period of time. And by the stuff you just put up here, it looks like you're going to be at 6, 7, 8% for sometime into the future. At what point in time does that stop, right? You can't keep going at three times the rate of inflation when the citizens of the city are only getting inflation, or maybe a little above inflation for their, for their payroll. That's not sustainable. The next question I would ask is, you showed a $4 million surplus in this year's budget, where is that going? Should it be used for reduction of property taxes? I don't, you know, considering the amount of money that we go through here, $4 million is about one month's worth of expenditures here, we should probably take a look at reducing the property taxes or using that money to reduce bond, bond debt, so that we get ourselves away from this problem. I was just at Anoka County's meeting last night, and the same thing is going on, five, six, and in their case, it's on average 8% for the next five years, and they're not guaranteeing it's going to stop there. It's going to, you know, if your budget was three times the rate of inflation, how long would it be sustainable for you? But like I said, I do appreciate the work you guys do, it's a difficult job, budgeting is a problematic issue, but sometimes you got to make those hard choices, and, and I will tell you, if you take a look at some of the other budgeting principles, zero-based budgeting being one of them, I'm not the biggest fan of it, but I like the one out in Oregon a lot better, where in Oregon, they assign numbers, one, one does some, some other number, for every service, every, everything they do there, and when they have tough times, they go, well, the low-hanging fruit is gone because we're not going to fund it this year. I hate seeing budgets where it's just an automatic increase, there is clearly stuff in that budget that can be cut. I don't know if it's all been addressed, don't care, that's your job.
Appreciate that.
You know, one of the other things is, I get, I get the need for people, and you hate seeing people turn over, right? Because training costs money. But it's inevitable that it's going to happen, either through attrition, or they moved out of state, or whatever, it's eventually going to happen. And the real question is, is every person that the city of Coon Rapids employs, if you had to re-employ them again, would you? You can't, I don't think any of you guys can sit there and tell me that I would re-employ every employee that the city has, because there are some people that you just wouldn't want back. One of the other things you look at when you get into higher levels of, of employment stuff is you have a standard graph. On one side, you put intelligence, on the other side, you put motivation, and when you divide that into the four quadrants, the upper right-hand corner is highly intelligent, highly motivated, train them and, and promote them. The ones down in the lower-left-hand corner, get rid of them. Then you got to deal with the other two. You can deal with the training issue, but motivation is often a problem. Thanks, gentlemen, have a nice evening.
Hey, Dave, Dave, sir, before you sit down, one question, one quick question. You, you said a type of budgeting, but it went by me really fast, it was just before you mentioned the Oregon model, the one through some number, but you mentioned some type of budgeting, and you didn't think much of it, but I didn't catch what you said.
So in Oregon...
Oh, no, I got that one, but the one just before that.
Zero-based budgeting.
Oh, zero-based, that's what you said.
I'm not the biggest fan of it, because I think it leaves some things out.
Got it, thank you.
But I'm also not a big fan of just saying, just because I had an expense this year, that expense continues next year, because clearly that is not the way to do it.
Okay.
There's other, there's other means and methods of which to do there.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, I was, I was taking notes and I just thought, ooh, I missed that, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to address counsel for the truth and taxation hearing? Call one more time for anybody to address counsel for the truth and taxation hearing? All right, we will close that and reserve comment to the city council.
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Just want to say that city council did spend a lot of time with staff going over this budget, and we are trying to make a lot of things happen all at the same time. I think if you do go through this budget, you'll see that in a city the size of Coon Rapids with our tax base, there are no easy solutions, and so this is what we've been able to come up with this year to make this year work. Hopefully, our plans will go forward, and in the next coming, upcoming years, we can address those years as they occur. With that, I would like to move that we approve resolution, Resolution 25.126, adopting the 2026 tax levy, and adopts, or, should we do these separately?
Do them together.
And adopts Resolution 25-127, adopting the 2026 budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Novak, and the second was Butler. Further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
You know, I, I really just want to thank both staff and my colleagues here for walking through the budget process this year, this is my first year on city council, and I really appreciated getting to understand the city structure, the challenges that we're facing, the fiscal constraints we have with our current tax base. Nobody likes to see their tax bill go up, but at the same time, I really want to make sure when you turn on water, it's clean, when you call 911, the police and the fire department get there, and to make sure that we have safe streets that are plowed correctly, and to address all of the different challenges we have. I, I do want to say, I am voting for the budget tonight, but I think it's a tolerable budget. I, I don't think this budget looks to the future, whether for next year or two or three years out. We left positions for police officers that were requested, we left out positions that were requested by the fire department, we have over 50,000 calls each year for the police department, and so I am concerned about, if we don't do it this year, that's one thing, but when will we do it? And when I looked at that great chart just showing the past 10 years, the average is 5%, but for the last five years, four of them have been over 7%, with the outlier being 6.8. I fully expect next year it will be a similar number, barring some really big change in the world compared to this time. This is a good budget, I don't think, though, that it plans for what we need going forward. I think it would be important when we're doing this next year, to really consider not just what our staffing needs are next year, but over a two- or three-year period, because that is something that we need to smooth out, so that we don't have those big increases. But I do think it's going to be a challenge for us over the next several years unless there's more development or new revenue or some other change.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscovia.
Just to add on that, and there was a lot that went into this budget, I think it's a responsible budget, we're covering core services, I mean, there is a lot of work, and I do give a lot of credit to staff, like the feedback from the, from the community tonight. When we started to look at this, we were looking at budget increases in the double digits, and we really had to roll up our sleeves and look at how, how that's going to impact our residents, and I think we made some adjustments that are prudent and necessary. I don't think that increases of this level are sustainable over the long term. Also, I'm a little bit concerned about our debt loads going forward, and I'll have a little bit of comment on that later, but overall, I think the staff and the council did a good job coming up with, with this budget.
Staff worked very hard on presenting this to us, and we did spend a lot of time discussing it, and I think it does reflect our priorities. And with Coon Rapids, when we have done surveys, which would almost be the equivalent of that zero-based thing, the first responders, our police and our fire, are always right up there, and that's a very expensive part of our budget. So I'm, I, I do support the budget, I wish it was a little less, but I, I didn't like the amount of cuts we were going to have to make.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it afterwards, but we're going to, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, our staff did a, did a great job of really kind of putting it, you know, to what is needed versus what is wanted, and it's, this is the most troubling discussions we have all year, is the budget. Whenever we consider budget, I think about the people who are on fixed incomes, the social security disability, who, who aren't making these types of, they're not getting these types of raises, and it does, it does really trouble me when we have increases like this. At the same time, this is the fifth budget that process I've been a part of, and it's actually the first, the first year where I really didn't have many questions, it seems like the staff did a pretty darn good job of being able to explain everything that they had on the budget. Last year, I think I questioned like five things, just to be sure, is this what we need versus what we want? And so this was one of those years, the, the number does, it bothers me, because I, I've, I've heard a lot of personal stories with people who are struggling, and it bothers me, but at the same time, I am confident that the staff did a, a, a good job of putting out needs versus wants this year.
All right, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I'm sorry, there was just one more thing I wanted to bring up, too, you know, the, the staff had brought up how this budget for 2026 holds a little bit of money for us to start planning for a potential police station renovation, it also talked about how street reconstruction is getting more expensive due to construction costs and borrowing costs. You know, I, I don't think those concerns are going away in the next few years either, we, we obviously do have to discuss what a timeline would be for renovations to a police station. I know some neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods around where I live, including mine, they're going to be ripping up all the streets and replacing the water mains for the first time in decades. So it is just, again, one of those things where, this gets us through next year, but I, I do share the concerns of one of the gentlemen who is here about how, when we're looking at how the county is facing troubles, that gap between our levy and their levy increases is shrinking right now, and I, I think that's something for us to be very cognizant of next year.
All right. Unfortunately, councilmember, word for councilmember Geisler was ill this evening, but he wanted to be on the record that he supports the proposed budget without amendment, and hopefully that would be to preserve a unanimous approval, despite his absence, so, assuming it goes that way, he said, anyway. All right, any further discussion on this?
I'll make it, I'll make it short, short and sweet, but yeah, I...
Do whatever you want.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the budget, again, I won't repeat a lot of what others have already said, but I know, both between staff, what, what staff originally brought to us and what I've seen in, in previous years, I think they did a very, very good job from the get-go, looking at, looking at what was really necessary for the city versus just, hey gee, can, can we spend money here and there? So by the time it got down to the, to the point where it's at now, again, kudos to, to staff for the work that they did, and just from the discussions that we've had, we're all in agreement that we've got to figure out a way to make this, the, the, the percentage increase reduced somehow, some way, making, making, taking a look at some serious cuts and, and potential changes that need to be made, but that being said, I think they did an excellent job with what they did this year.
This was the, this was the first year that my property taxes exceed the total payments for the year on my first house in Coon Rapids that I bought in 1979, but it was like, the total payment on that was $530 a month, and property taxes this year are going to be 600 a month, so, it's like, oh, ouch.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, and hopefully councilmember Geisler's vote counts. He phoned it in. All right, item six, thank you very much for all your work on this, thanks for the presentation, thank you for your observations and the suggestions from the city, or from the community, I mean. Item six is to consider adoption of ordinance 2340, amending city code chapter 13-200. Anybody need any information on this one? This is the one we've, was introduced at the last meeting, it's actually been introduced, introduced, modified, reintroduced, and we're looking at, yeah, 13-200.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2340, repealing in its entirety and adding chapter 13-200 municipal water system in connections and authorized summary publication.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this, or further discussion? I like the fact that it's right in there, right in the motion, municipal water system, because that sort of takes care of my concern with the wells and the irrigation systems. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven, consider adoption of ordinance 2334, amending city code chapter 8-100. Mr. Brody, is this, you're doing this one? You doing this one?
Your Honor, your in council, this is similar to the last one. We made some changes to a couple of different chapters. There are a couple of different sections in chapter eight. On this particular one, we did make some changes to it, so we reintroduced it in the last meeting and adopted it. And so we're asking that you adopt it today. This is our new...
Nonsense code talks about various things that we pulled out of the zoning code, put it here to make it easier for both staff and our residents to understand in regards to some parking, junk and debris in your yard, exterior storage, those kinds of things. So we're just asking that you adopt that ordinance tonight and authorize that summary publication.
All right. Your Honor? Councilmember Novak?
Just moved to adopt ordinance number 2334, repealing in its entirety and adding chapter 8-100 nuisances and authorized summary publication.
Second.
A motion by Novak and a second by Armstrong. Is there a discussion on this? The one thing I would remind people of, because we're talking about nuisance codes here, is we are a complaint-driven city. We have, you know, about 400 lane miles of roads, 400 cul-de-sacs, and 25,000 housing units. Our code enforcement cannot be everywhere. So if you have a neighbor, some... Problem with your neighbor or somebody, if you need it addressed, please let us know through code enforcement, because otherwise it probably won't get taken care of. All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight, and I know I'll take some heat about that, ratting on your neighbors. It's like, I'm sorry. I don't know what to do. Consider adoption of ordinances 2345 and 2346, amending city code chapters 6-501 and 6-700. Mr. Brody, kind of the same thing?
Correct. And this is our... Was previously our chicken ordinance. We're now changing it to domestic birds, so we've added a few birds that will be allowed to be kept in the city, and of which those do not include ducks or turkeys.
No.
For...
Geese or turkeys.
I'm sorry, geese. They do include ducks. Ducks and pigeons.
Ducks is what got us into this.
Right back to chickens, I guess. So I apologize for that. And then it sort of updates some of the structures and things that are required for those additional birds. And then we also had to amend our non-domestic animals to... To reapply this change in chapter 6, 700. So we're asking that you would adopt both of those ordinances and, again, authorize this.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Brody on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
I just want to take a minute to thank Councilmember Griszkowiac for bringing this to council. He was talking to someone at one of our city in the park events over the summer. You get to come and talk to city staff and council members, and someone came up to him and said, why don't we allow ducks? And it was one of those moments where then we were able to go back and talk about it with staff and added a couple of other birds that I hadn't thought about. And, you know, it was just a very swift example of community feedback to council members, to council, and now a new ordinance, and I'm very excited for it.
Was this just last summer?
It was.
Wow.
Yeah.
Speed of government.
Speed of government's pretty good.
Went pretty good on this one.
Mayor, maybe I should give due credit then to the birds that we are allowing. It's chickens, ducks, quails, pigeons, and doves.
Okay. And then, did you get a chance to review that feeding ordinance so that we can actually feed them too now, now that we have them?
Yes, we can. It's the only... I did. It's not, and I can't remember exactly, but it's not impacted by this particular ordinance.
Oh, okay. All right. Because I remember that was a big thing back then. Okay. And then to clarify, we're modifying the chicken ordinance, so you don't just go get these birds. You come in, get a permit, buy a license for that, and have things inspected, and there's a very strict code you follow for having these birds.
And now remembered, Mayor, on your previous question, is we don't allow you to feed non-domestic animals. These are now not considered non-domestic animals.
Ah, very good. Very good. All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Brody?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Carlson?
I'm glad that ostriches didn't gain any ground. I'm glad we shut that down right away. Too big.
Mr. Mayor, too big.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2345, amending city code section 6-501 non-domestic animals, and adopt ordinance number 2346, repealing in its entirety and adopting chapter 6-700 domesticated birds and authorized summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiac?
I'll just point out that I support this change, and, you know, we looked at it, and first of all, we looked at what other communities were doing, and they were allowing these types of things without any issues, and we looked at that pretty heavily. We also, going back to when we introduced and allowed chickens raising, we really haven't had any issues with that, and I know that there's quite a few permits in the city with that today. So I'm glad that the residents stepped up, contacted us with this. We worked through staff, and here we are. So I support it.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Armstrong?
I can't let this go, but since we're talking about budget increases and on and on and on, feeding the birds, is it still tuppence a bag? Or is it more than that? Oh, come on.
Still what?
Tuppence a bag.
Oh.
Come on. Is there no Mary Poppins fans out there?
Oh.
Feed the birds, tuppence a bag. Tuppence, tuppence.
Can't go so deep.
I should have stopped talking before.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, except for you, Councilmember Armstrong? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Okay. Item nine, under new business, is to consider an introduction of an ordinance amending chapter 13-899 CenterPoint Energy Franchise Agreement. Mr. Brody?
First of all, Your Honor, I apologize. There's a typo. It's reminding me of chapter 13-800. So that's the ordinance that we'll be introducing tonight.
Okay.
This is respect to utility franchise to CenterPoint in the city. Under our charter, we can franchise utilities, and we do that. We can franchise them for up to 20 years at a time, which is what we've done here. And so now, CenterPoint has come up this year. We've negotiated with them to enter into a new franchise agreement that we do by ordinance. So tonight, we're asking that we introduce that ordinance. The ordinance is similar, if not identical. I think it's more similar to our previous ones with the other utilities that we've done over the last 20 years. And so it's consistent with that as we're required to by state law. And so, again, it just continues the relationship that we have already with CenterPoint, and probably most important with, for council's perspective, is one, it gives us the right to help regulate them within our right of way, but also to continue to collect the franchise fee, which is at 4%. And so there's no changes to that, and we're not proposing any changes to that going forward. So, again, we're asking tonight that you would introduce that. Our charter does require that we have a public hearing before we enter into a franchise agreement, so we're asking that you schedule that as well. Due to some additional notice requirements that are required by our charter, we're going to have that, not at our next meeting, but the one in January 6th. If I can stand for any questions, otherwise just ask a chance to introduce it.
Any questions of Mr. Brody on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I just want to be clear with Mr. Brody, then. So we're just continuing a franchise that we've had for 20 years.
And probably before that as well. So it just required, and that's the maximum amount of time that you can under state law. We'll do it again in another 20 years, hopefully.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Brody? If there are no questions, we will consider ordinance... The ordinance amending chapter 13-800 CenterPoint Energy Franchise Agreement introduced. And now, do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
I think we could just say that we're going to set the public hearing.
Say the words?
Yeah.
And then set a public hearing for January 6, 2026 at 7:00 p.m. All right. And item 10 is to consider purchase of a Rosenbauer aerial, I'm sorry, Rosenbauer aerial, and a Rosenbauer rescue truck, resolution 25-128, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from bonds. Chief Piper?
Most of it's already been covered, but obviously this is stuff we've talked about quite a bit on here. Obviously, to answer any questions you may have, the aerial is used approximately 15 years old. If it comes in, the one comes in in two years, but as man indication, it could be a little longer. Best case scenario, it would show up at the end of '27, and the rescue truck would show up at the end of '26, and then have a state that would replace, which have a rescue. Whichever of the two rescues would be considered in worse shape at that time, we won't be asking you for the second rescue as your earlier, if that makes any questions. But I'll... I don't need to repeat everything that's said, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Chief Piper, so what are we going to do with the extra aerial truck? What are we going to do with the old one? Are we going to sell them?
Correct.
And ultimately, we'll sell both rescue trucks as well?
Correct.
Oh, my... Okay. Okay. Yes, the... Anything new that we get, whatever's being replaced, gets sold. That is correct. And basically, the only difference is on the engines, when we get a new engine, like we just did recently, then the engine that's replacing goes into reserve capacity. The truck that's in reserve capacity gets sold, so that's probably the caveat to that. But, yeah, the trucks we're talking about here, both of them would get sold upon delivery of the new ones.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Couple of questions for Chief Piper. First point is, it's a large purchase, of course. I mean, trucks are expensive. Did some research, useful life out of a truck like this is 10 to 15 years. Looks like we're going to get 15 years for what we have now. It looks like you could potentially get extra useful life out of a truck like this if you refurbish them, whether it's the lift truck, the chassis, the engine, or whatever. Have you ever looked into what it would take to refurbish this truck and get another 10 years?
On this particular truck, we have not. In the past, we have looked into it, and it didn't make sense to us. I think the things to consider is that even... Is that when these trucks get that old, I mean, the point is, is its reliability. This truck isn't worn out. These trucks don't get worn out because of a lot of use. They get worn out, I mean, they're just... They're old. I mean, and they start to fail. We've had that experience already. And the point is, is that that's why when they're up in that 14, 15-year-old range, the reliability just isn't there. And as our Joe Wagner over in Fleet Maintenance would tell you, that when they get that old, then it becomes more difficult to get parts to replace, to repair them, not to mention the amount of technology that has improved dramatically from... Since this truck was purchased, National Fire Protection Association, that develops the safety standards for fire equipment, has probably had four revisions to their stuff. Stuff like, just as an example on this truck, if you see a ladder truck set up, if the outriggers are all the way out on both sides, we can operate anywhere we want. We're safe. The truck's not going to tip over, I guess. Well, there's times where the car parked, there's a tree, whatever, you can't get the outriggers all the way out. Well, if you don't have them all the way out on a truck like we have today, you're not sure what's going to happen if you go off that side of the truck. These new trucks, just to give an example, is that it's all computerized. Wherever you put the outriggers, it will allow you to go off that side as far as you can safely. Another example is like, right now, when we get on this truck, if we want to get to the bucket, as any of you know, we got to get up on the back of the truck, we got to crawl along the grubs, hold on, not fall through, get out to the bucket, and use both hands, unless you're carrying a chainsaw or whatever stuff. Then you're doing it with one hand. This new one has an articulating boom, so what happens is that the very end of the last eight feet of the ladder articulates. So basically, that goes down onto the ground. You load the firefighters into it, you load the equipment into it. It's safer. It's a lot safer. You get up top to roof, if you, you know, put a straight ladder up, if you get up to the top of the roof, when it's sitting on the roof line, to get down to the roof down below, then you got to put a small ladder on the end of the bucket to get down there. Well, when you have an articulating boom, which is the new technology, you drop it down there. Firefighter can go down there, can put a hole in the roof, for example, you want to ventilate the roof. They can do that while attached to the bucket. So in other words, if something goes wrong, as you see in videos where the roof collapses, the firefighter doesn't go through the roof. So there's many, many reasons why we are strongly, strongly believe the best-case scenario for us is to replace it for the reasons I've stated and more.
Thank you. If I could just have a follow-up then, but absolutely firefighter safety, number one. I mean, the council's got you 100% on that, Chief Piper. You mentioned these trucks don't wear out, but is there a way to outfit or refurbish a truck like this with the new technology? It would allow these booms to go out and, you know, calculate how far they got to go with the angles and everything like that. Are those types of things that could be retrofitted? Could you, in fact, retrofit a truck like this with the new boom technology that you had? Those are just a couple of questions that I've kind of had rolling around in my head.
Yeah. I mean, I can't answer that for sure, but I will speculate that no. I mean, this is heavy-duty electronics going into it, the articulating boom on the end of the ladder and stuff like that. I would be very surprised that that could be done, but I can't say that with 100% certainty.
Okay. Not to interrupt, but I think the other challenge would be, it takes them two and a half years to build one of these. How long would it take them to retrofit that? How long would we... Would that truck be away from us and out of service to be reconditioned or retrofitted? Or, you know, I don't know what we would do.
That's a really good point, and something that we could, you know, think about in the future. Do we keep this truck a little bit longer so they can retrofit it and then, you know, kind of get them in a rotating cycle like this? I think we could maybe get a little bit more useful life out of these. They're so expensive, they're so big, and they're so well-built. You know, they're just so well-built. Like you said, they don't wear out, but the technology gets ahead of us, right?
Right. I think it's worth noting that previous back when I took my current position in 2007, we had two aerial devices. We had the ladder truck that we're talking about tonight, and we also had an engine that had a 75-foot ladder on it with a waterway so we could do, you know, do large diameter, you know, heavy water from an elevated stream. But we, as a department, decided that, you know, with the way things are operating here, we could get rid of that, because, again, like, as you deal with every time, you know, with all the different budget issues, we try to be cognizant of where can we save money? And that's why we went from two aerial devices at that time to the one that we have today that we're talking about replacing.
Yeah. And that was going to be actually one of my questions, too. How often do we actually dispatch the aerial ladder? You know, we don't do it as much as maybe once did, but we do have a lot of apartments in this town, and you got to get up high. If there is an event, we got to make sure that we're there and prepared. So I appreciate you answering those questions, John, Chief Piper, and that's all I have.
Your Honor?
I think we'll do very well for resale on this if we decide to sell it. Our... When back when we bought this one, they were only a million dollars to buy, or just a little over, but we sold the used one for $200,000.
Cannon Falls, if my memory's correct?
Cannon Falls is where it went, yeah. Yeah, so I would think we would get very good money for this on the market, considering what they cost now, but...
Well, as you know, you're talking about the numbers. I mean, the standard engine, we joked when we were up at the fire station three a while ago for a new employee tour, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but the first truck we purchased for the city back in the day was like $3,400, and now they're $925,000, so things have changed.
Councilmember Novak?
No, no, that's... I have to admit, I'm a little curious myself to find out what the answers are to some of your questions, Councilmember. How often do they go out? What would the cost be to get it retrofitted? Actually, I'm on the opposite side of that one, because being in the insurance industry, I see a lot of replacement-type costs for normal vehicles. And I know that a lot of times, depending on the vehicle, it can actually be more expensive to repair and retrofit a vehicle to a new status or a close-to-new status than it is just to buy a new vehicle. So it really depends on what would have to happen, what's going on, and what the cost would be in labor, really. It's not so much the parts, it's the labor to make it work. So my guess is that it would be much more expensive to retrofit something than it would be just to, to buy a new one. The, the cost benefit, when you look at it, would say just buy the new one. But I would be curious to see that answer.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Piper?
Mr. Mayor.
Another discussion. Councilmember Butler?
Chief Piper, one thing I'm curious about, so, so this truck's currently 13 years old, it's going to be 15 years old by the time we get the new aerial truck. You mentioned just like how much technology has changed in that time, and I'm thinking about like, you know, in 2012, I got my first smartphone, and it's a lot different than the one I have here today. You know, could you talk through a bit, like, have we done any sort of changes with the truck over the last 13 years just because of how much technology has changed? I'm kind of thinking in the same vein of just, there's certain things that maybe aren't offered as well anymore, just there's different technology now that would be, again, hard to retrofit in. I'm just curious like how we've even adapted with technological change over the last 13 years.
If I understand, you're talking about the new stuff we're doing to the, to the truck that we're purchasing, the new technologies, that do I understand?
I am curious about that, too. I was mostly curious, like, what, if any, changes have we made to the current truck over the 13 years just because technology has changed?
I would say none.
Okay. But what would we get then with the new truck in terms of technology? I know we talked a little bit about the sensors and whatnot, but.
Right. I think the, the, the major things is, is what, is the firefighter safety.
Sure.
For both on the roof and loading, I already addressed that. I addressed the technology to where if the outriggers aren't all the way out, the computer can allow you to do what is safe. Another thing is, is like, they call it the soft touch. So in other words, if you're, if somebody's up in the air, 100 feet up, and you're, and you're operating with the controls before, if you let go, I mean, it comes to a sudden stop, it really jerks a lot, that doesn't happen anymore. Now the technology is, if you let go of it, it slowly stops. So that's kind of probably the three things. And again, you know, obviously airbags and.
Sure.
Stuff they have in cars and stuff like that. But I guess that, you know, I'm sorry, keep the microphone up here. That's the kind of stuff that I would cite as the new stuff that we're talking about that's, again, makes us more effective and safer.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Chief?
Any interest in buying a couple for fire trucks?
I'll go for it. I motion that we authorize the purchase of one Rosenbauer aerial truck and one Rosenbauer rescue truck and adopt Resolution 25-128 declaring official intent to reimburse from future tax-exempt bond.
Second. Motion by Butler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiac?
I guess I would have kind of maybe liked to see these taken separately, because we just discussed the need for the truck and, you know, possible refurbishment and things like that. But the second part, Resolution 25-128 declaring official intent to reimburse expenditure from bonds, is something that I think I would like to talk about, too, because in the budget we have, the budget presentation that we just saw, we had $2.2 million for the truck and $400,000 for the rescue truck. But if we're going to issue bonds for that, well, let me just start by asking, Ms. Hanson, if we issued bonds for the truck, equipment certificates, I guess they're called, what's the term on that bond?
Um.
Oops, pass the mic.
Councilmember Griszkowiac, we would never issue a bond longer than the life of the equipment. So in past instances, it would be 10 years because we keep the engines that long. So at, at most, it would be 15, but we would discuss at the time of issuance.
I think we have a follow-up from our city manager here. Mr. Stemwell, sorry.
Mayor, Council, it's important to note, too, that this is sort of declaring the intent. We aren't yet issuing any debt service related to this equipment certificates, but this is a part of the process that if we want to do that, the time that's required. It's also important to note that the way the purchase of this truck would work, you put a certain amount, 50% down when the chassis is completed and the other 50%, you know, before you receive the vehicle. And so the timing of when we might need that is down the road, and so, you know, obviously there's time for discussion. I think it's important to note, though, is this is by far the largest purchase that we do in our capital equipment fund. And so as we're trying to smooth out those peaks and valleys, if we, if we talked about here over the last, over the next 10 years, we're looking at what is that levy that we need to sustain, sort of the annual average cost of that capital equipment fund. The engine, the ladder truck is this giant anomaly in that graph. And so we need those equipment certificates to sort of smooth that out for this really extreme purchase, even within that fund, which has very expensive purchases already. If we don't do that, we would need to seriously accelerate our capital equipment fund levy, which, again, and sort of creates this high point for several years, and it's going to drop off again, and then it'll create another high point 15 years down the road. So equipment certificates are really designed to allow communities to address those more anomalous type of purchases without, you know, getting the whiplash in their levy. And so in this case, we would strongly recommend we go that route to avoid that. If we don't, then we're going to have to significantly increase our levy, like, by double in that fund to make it work over the next, you know, several years. And well, frankly, more than that, because the $2 million is going to be due in '26 and '27, and, you know, that fund isn't anticipating that much revenue. So that's really the need in this case, whereas in the last engine, we were able to avoid that after a similar conversation, in part because it was a much smaller purchase, and we happened to have some state funding that had been given to us as one-time public safety funds that were sitting there that was obvious use for some purchase like that. We don't have that this time around, and that was kind of the convenience of a couple of years ago.
We, we still could engage in a longer conversation.
Yep, absolutely.
About this in the future and make sure that we really look at this.
But in order to preserve the ability to.
Right.
To issue those certificates, we'd want to pass this resolution tonight.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, a follow-up then.
Yep.
To me, it doesn't make sense to finance something for the life of the thing. You, you finance it, you pay for it, by the time it's paid off, it's obsolete, it's no good. I can see bonding for things that last a long, long time. Our streets, our roads, this public building that we're in 30, 50 years, we bond for that and it gets paid for over a couple of, maybe even a couple of generations in the city. And the other thing is, is if, if we bonded, I mean, 2.2 plus, 2.6 million dollars over 15 years, I mean, even, even with good rates of a 3% bond rate, we'd be looking at, we'd be looking at 400, 500, maybe more $1,000 worth of interest on that, which is a lot of money, in my opinion. So I, I just, I don't know how I can make this vote, knowing that I, I really don't want us to reimburse from bonds. You know what I mean?
You're, you're okay buying the trucks?
Yeah. We need the truck. We got to protect the community and the firefighters, there's no question, but we've got to pay for it, too.
Yeah. Well, Mayor and Council, again, we're not, you're not making that decision tonight, you're preserving the ability to make that decision later on. So from that standpoint, if you believe that the truck, the trucks are right to purchase, you know, they're in the budget, I would suggest you move forward with that. And then if Council would like, we can have an additional conversation well in advance of when we need, need to make this sort of financial, specific financial decision related to how we're financing the truck.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Just to clarify, Mr. Stemwell, if we did not bond for this item, then the only other option that we have, the only other realistic option we would have would be to increase property taxes. Is that correct?
I mean, we're increasing property taxes either way.
Understood.
But we, there would be a more acute increase in the levy for the capital equipment fund, or we'd have to find other sources for it, internal sources. And, you know, we've been doing quite a bit of that, and so we don't want to overtap fund balances in other areas and sort of, you know, do an IOU to those funds more than we need to. So, uh, yeah, it, you know, I think it's the, it's just one approach Council would like to take. I mean, the, the term of the equipment certificate wouldn't have to be for the life. We want to pay it off sooner than that, and we can look at those options. This is really just holding that, the ability to do it at this time.
And just as a follow-up, I do want to let the, the community know that Council is examining other options than property taxes as ways to generate income. We don't want to raise people's property taxes here, because we pay them to.
So Councilmember Griszkowiac, or Mr. Stemwell, so my understanding is, so we're saying that we're going to order the trucks and we're going to have the option of future tax-exempt bond, but even if we do that, we're still going to have to vote on that at the time, and we're going to have to authorize that, and we're going to have conversations about that bond beforehand.
Correct. When we ordered the last engine, we had a similar conversation about the need for equipment certificates. Ultimately, we decided to go a different direction. However, when we ordered the truck, we, too, then at that point, passed a similar resolution to say we intend to reimburse ourselves through the tax-exempt bond, ultimately didn't do that, but we could have. And so that's a similar process as we've been proposing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Griszkowiac?
Are we getting ourselves a little bit ahead of ourselves if we're going to order a truck, but we're not sure how we're going to pay for it? I mean, it seems like those two things should go together in my, in my mind.
Yeah. And I think with the two and a half-year build time, it's.
Oh, no, that, that was the other part of my, my thought process here, is that you said we have to have like half down for the chassis, half down when it's done. When would the first down payment need to be made, then?
You know, it could be a year from now, so it's either late '26 or '27, usually somewhere in that timeframe, I think.
It would be.
Okay.
At least a year, rather than closer to 16 months in the process, yeah. For the first.
That does give us some time to talk about it, to, to, to budget it. Councilmember Novak, to your point, not necessarily raise levy if we don't do bonds, because one of the person's examples was if you put, if you put a number on everything of what you really want and what you really need, if, if the truck is 100 and new furniture for City Hall is 3, you know, you're going to go for the truck, right? Okay.
Okay. Suddenly, we're getting new furniture, too?
Not a part of this request, Mayor and Council.
All right, back to this. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11, consider agreement, consider an agreement with Carisoft for Zoom and VoIP services. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, I'll take this one, although we're giving too many detailed IT sort of questions, you know, they may go right over my head, but I'm going to make it up here. So Stafford's proposing that we move forward with a new telephony provider, in this case, it's Zoom for government. The big trend in this industry is going towards soft phones, so you're, you know, answering your phone through Microsoft Teams, through Zoom, on your computer, on your phone, you name it. And so that's the direction that's being recommended here through Zoom. And as you can see, there's a number of benefits, both operationally and budgetarily and custom service-wise. There's a lot more flexibility with the service. It's easier for employees to kind of stay connected when they need to, any number of reasons. The agreement that's being proposed with Carisoft is a four-year agreement that sort of has that first year as a free year, but then three years of contracting on that for a total of $113,500 over that four-year period. Given that it's over $100,000 agreement, we're asking Council to approve that as it exceeds the city manager's authority, and. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Are we currently using a VoIP system?
We do have one. It's an on-premise system through Mitel, and so it is, or the internet phone, but it doesn't have the capabilities to integrate with Microsoft Teams and things of that nature that this product will.
I guess more of my question was, has that been dependable for us?
Yep.
Okay. That's good. Do we have a hardline phone for the emergency operations center? Or is that also VoIP?
That is, it's through the same, the current system. The, the new, the team, Zoom, I get all these things mixed up. Zoom for Government does sort of have the 911 component to it, because that has been some of the concerns with going with soft phones, is you're not, it doesn't show up in emergencies, you know, when you call 911 necessarily. But there are ways to program it, there are ways to, you know, location services, whatever it might be, to address some of those issues. So we feel comfortable with what's being proposed.
Okay. All right. Questions for Mr. Stemwell?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
My only real concern, and it's not much of one, because I'm familiar with Zoom and I did go through that arrangement, it would be internet security protocols and making sure that what happens here in the city isn't hackable by someone outside the city. So that would be really my only concern.
Yeah.
What assurances do we have from Zoom?
Yeah. Mayor and Council, I mean, this has to meet standards that, meet the thresholds that are required by the. The CIA and FBI. It's, we have, you know, police services here and things of that nature, encryption, you name it. And so they meet all those standards and then some. There are a number of communities that have gone to Zoom for Government Service. Plymouth is the one that comes to mind, and they've had it for a year or two and are very happy with it and feel, we asked some of those same questions, you know, about security and integration with 911, things like that, and got really good responses from them directly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, just one more question.
Councilmember Novak?
Before I make a motion. The quoted price, $113,000, first year, no charge upfront, four-year term, so $113,500 for, for four years.
Correct. Essentially, it's the $113 for four years. Got it.
Okay. Wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
That the city council grant the city manager authority to approve a four-year agreement with Carisoft at a quoted price of $113,500.47 for VoIP and related Zoom services.
Second.
Motion by Griszkowiac and a second by Butler.
Mayor?
Mr. Stemwell?
Your Honor, if, if the Councilmember Griszkowiac requires both the city manager and the mayor to sign any agreements over $100,000, so if we could just amend the motion.
I'll amend my motion.
Authorize the, authorize the contract and allow the city manager and mayor to sign it.
Okay. You okay with this, you okay with that second, or?
I'm good with that amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second to grant the city manager and the mayor authority to approve a four-year agreement with Carisoft at a quoted price of $113,500.47 for VoIP and related Zoom services. Any further discussion?
Well, Your Honor, if you have to do it, then, I don't know, I mean.
Yeah, right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Open mic, public comment. If anybody's here for open mic, public comment, feel free to come up to the mic. Open mic is a time, an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Well, my name is Dave Olson. I was up here earlier. Can I comment on some of just the last banter that was going on?
I'm sorry?
Can I comment on the last banter that was going on here?
Technically not, because that's part of the, the regular meeting agenda. What, what this tries to avoid is running a meeting out. We've already made all those decisions. If you have issues, you can spoke, talk to me, you're the city manager, wherever you may, may have questions with.
We'll come up and talk to you when this thing is over.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else for open mic? All right, we'll close that. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. I have three things time-related. Riverdale Village sent out notice of their upcoming Santa Fest this Saturday, December Riverdale Village sent out notice of their upcoming Santa Fest this Saturday, December 6th, 11:30 to 3:30, face painter, balloon artist, holiday drawings, holiday crafts. They really, really go out of their way to make some family events up there. So that's at the 12654 Riverdale Boulevard, so it's gonna be one of the units up there by Schneiderman's Furniture or someplace there. And that's Saturday, December 6th, 11:30 to 3:30. Also, our, they're, they're taking another run at that bridge, so...
What?
So the, the new closures for Coon Rapids Boulevard will be out on December 10th and December 11th, and they'll be removing the closure on, at six, by 6:00 AM Friday, December 12th. So they're going to try and get the spans set, including the new span they built to replace the old span that got wrecked, but then they just want to get that stuff done. We're not agreeing to concrete or anything.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, but make sure you, if, make sure you check out the city's website, Orinok County, because they will be starting the traffic switch Wednesday morning and December 10th, and it will impact all three days with the closure being removed by 6:00 AM Friday, December 12th. And then going chronologically, the next thing I've got is the Coon Rapids Tree Lighting Festival. There we go. Saturday, December 13th from 3:30 to 6:00. The countdown to the tree lighting and the fireworks are at 5:30 PM. This is at Boulevard Plaza, 11,002 Crooked Lake Boulevard next to the Ice Center. Join us for a free community celebration, enjoy cocoa and cookies, pictures with Santa, live music, fire pits to keep warm, and write letters to Santa. Not by the fire pit, but in the heated tent. There's also, what's the Nest of Threads will be there with some decorations for kids to make, and make sure you stay for the countdown and to the light display on the tree and the fireworks, again, that's at 5:30.
Emphasis on the countdown there this year.
Emphasis on the countdown, we're gonna get that countdown right this year. Yeah, last year, I forgot to turn the countdown clock off, and there was a kid on the stage that started the countdown, and everybody went with it, and it was like, oh, okay, whatever. Other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
So we have the holiday lighting contest going on, and the applicant, the applications closed on, actually yesterday, and soon our arts commission will be going out and judging the displays, and thanks to everybody who's participated this year, and the city will be putting out a, kind of a map with all the different residents that are participating in the, in the holiday lighting event, so once that gets out, it'll be a great time for people just to get a hold of that mat, go out, grab some coffee, hot chocolate, drive around, look at some beautiful lighting, they got a whole month.
All right, other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Griszkowjak.
I would just like to point out that, you know, we had a big water main break on Thanksgiving at 121st and Hanson, it was a major one, 12, 12-inch water main affecting a lot of people on Thanksgiving, so I just want to give credit to the city manager for coordinating everything, public works and everything else, because it was a, it was a major break and a big hole, and I think we're gonna be dealing with some ramifications on that for a while. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Griszkowjak. I did, I did want to mention that because there were a whole host of employees and contractors that went out there on Thanksgiving, were there all day, and have been dealing with repercussions ever since, so we had a large water main break on 121st East of Hanson. While they're working on that, there's another break on the west side of Hanson. These particular water mains were pretty deep and caused a lot of sinkholes and you name it, so there's gonna be a little bit of pain over the winter on 121st now because we, we are attempting to compact the soils in that area as best we can to allow for driving over the winter. We'll have to fill in with sand and gravel as best we can because the plants that create the pavement are closed already for the season, so there's no hot mix that can be used to be put down over those areas probably until April or something along those lines, so it's gonna get patched up as best it can for winter, will come back in the spring and do the ultimate fix. So beyond, beyond that, you know, it was a great coordination between utilities, streets department, different contractors, public safety, you name it, we're out there all day on Friday. Subsequently, we've had some other breaks, and some of those same people, even today, as the mayor mentioned to me, he ran across the water main break, so there's been a lot of overtime, a lot of tired public works folks dealing with some of those issues. It's pretty typical this time of year when you get some of the weather changes, fluctuations in frost and temperatures, water pressures, you name it, those pressures find the weak spots in the system and exploit them, and that's kind of what's happened here, hopefully. We're gonna be in a better place now, moving forward, but certainly there will be other water breaks as time goes on, so. Of course, it was a perfect storm on a holiday, all of those things, so thank you for bringing that up, and we really do appreciate all people did, and I had very little to do with it, did nothing to do with it on the day of, you know, and sort of just making sure things were going okay, and we had media coverage and all those sorts of things, credits all due to the public works people who were there.
And it's a great reminder how important those master contracts are that we have, that we can just call those contractors that are already vetted and they can just go out and fix it.
That's right, yeah.
But there was a lot of our own staff out there too, for sure.
There were, a number of them, yeah.
All right, other business?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Butler.
I'd just like to echo the thank yous on that. I, I had a handful of residents and some of the businesses right there at the intersection just say that they were really impressed with how quickly this was resolved, especially on a holiday. Obviously, that's stressful for a lot of different reasons anyways, so again, just thank you to everything, and I know there's still quite a bit of work to do over the next few months.
All right. Any other business to come before Council?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Butler to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.